Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular town council meeting. If you'd please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every and absolute power.
Pastor Nate, would you lead us to the invocation?
Sure, let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for the freedom to assemble, the freedom to gather tonight, to come in and share opinions and sometimes disagree, but ultimately with the same goal in mind that that's the betterment of our community. Thank you for those that have been elected to serve, those who are choosing and to speak tonight, as we need to send here to peace over the meeting, that even if this event happens, that we leave a peaceful resolution. Thank you for your due and your grace, and Jesus same. Amen.
Oh, by the way, half an hour, I said. I didn't get that.
So first on our agenda is our Black History Month presentation by Ms. Mosey Jordan and Brittany Davis. I don't see Mosey, so...
We would like to send there some serious influences for her not being here today. We have a family emergency, but we'll be here on the other half.
Absolutely, come on down. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. I will be speaking about Carline, the Shakira community. The rail and trolley transportation helped the newly named North Tazewell and Tazewell. It spanned quite well during the 1890s and the early 1900s. The trolley connected the depot to Main Street via Tazewell Avenue. It would be the first resort community developed by the Tazewell Brewing Company. Tazewell Avenue would also be the beginning of the African-American community known as Shakira. Despite the economic and social hardships, Shakira symbolizes the progress made by the community. Many stories have been told about the origin of the Shakira, one being that people would shake a cloth to stop the trolley, another being it came from the wash days where the clothes had been washed can hope to dry on the line. The reference was once an offensive and derogatory term to the members of the community because how we were once treated. It would be, it was because of the negative connotations associated with the term Shakira that Carline would be adopted by the members of the community after the resounding and naming of that part of Tazewell Avenue, after the building of 460 and the neighborhood. The community underwent many changes throughout the years. The building was, that was once the school, first through sixth grade, for black children would turn into a community center after integration, and now home to the head suburb. Families would be divided from the community and the original homelands because of the building of 460, one home being photographed while being moved in parts from its original land to the new property. The members of Midway Church of Christ marching from the old church building, now known as Shakira Church of Jesus Christ, to the new building on Division Street. Within recent events, Shakira has changed the negative connotation to a positive impact. Many members in the community wanted to make changes for the better, and did that via love and support. With the help of many members putting unity back into the community and has brought together the young and old, it is giving everyone something positive to work for, to continue to make a difference, not only for now, but the future as well. It has brought back hope and pride. Shakira on Carline has a similar origin story like those in Kentucky, Georgia, and Mississippi. Historically being born during the industrialization period of the town after slavery, but during the time, scusing, but during the time racial tensions were still high, thus causing the negative connotations of Shakira and its people. Since the people in the community have tried to positively change the dynamics and how people view the area and those who come from there in hopes that the future generations won't have to. If you know what you came, there is really no limit to where you can go. James Paul. Thank you.
Thank you. When you see Mosey, tell her we're thinking about her and hope everything's okay.
Thank you.
So next on our agenda, Mr. Luke Allison is going to give us a project update. You're doing Main Street, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, go on up.
Hello, everyone. My name is Luke Allison. Bulldog, driven through, born and raised, class of 2010, Tazewell High School. My business partner and best friend, Jared Burton, and I have taken it upon ourselves to do a project in downtown Pulaski, or downtown Tazewell. Sorry, I do work in downtown Pulaski. This is actually one that's much more personal to me, but I would like for Jared to introduce himself as well.
I'm Jared Burton. I graduated year 2006. I got to move back here this past year in the circumstances that are not great, but I am happy to be back here, probably my wife and we just did, just welcomed our first son in December. So lots of new things, lots of changes. This is also new for me. It's very exciting. It's potentially going to give us the opportunity for my wife to have her own salon. She's a hairstylist, and that's what we, she'd like to do is one of those spaces. So to give her the opportunity to work for herself is something that I'm excited about and I'm passionate about. And I believe that there's a lot of other things that are coming through, going to come through this project that Luke's going to talk about, that will be beneficial to a large majority of our community.
Thank you, Jared. So without further ado, 320 Main Street in downtown. So real quick, so the building overview, this is the historic Tazewell Equipment and Motor Corporation Building in downtown Tazewell, right across from the Thompson and Litten Building. It was constructed in 1948, and it's approximately 23,000 square feet. It's got two very large commercial storefronts on the street level, and it's three full stories. So there's a full basement underneath the street level of the building. So our plan is to, I mean, everybody in here probably recognizes that building if you've been down Main Street. So it is a cornerstone for the downtown of Tazewell. Our plan is to completely renovate the building. Because of its size and for the future use that we want, wanted to make to use housing and commercial, it's going to require renovation. So we're not going to cut the corners. We're going to put the investment in to add a sprinkler system to the building. We're going to have up to 18 apartments in this building and two new businesses at least on the ground floor, right there on Main Street. So you think 18 is a lot? It is, but each floor is 7,700 square feet. So it is a monstrous building when you can grasp that concept. So the rear facade, we're going to have rear entrances on the ground floor on the rear. We're going to re-point and repair the brick where there's some water damage. So this will be fresh mortar, fresh brick where it's been damaged, and we're going to optimize this rear and side of the building for parking, and we're going to replace an old damaged sewage line and upgrade the utilities throughout the building. So that ground floor layout that on the rear of the building, as you can see, this was where that, the rear of the building where the garage doors were, this is the side of the building, so Main Street is at the bottom. We'll have seven apartments in the ground floor, four one-bedroom, three two-bedroom. These will be safe and accessible apartments, two of which will be fully ADA accessible. I brought it to Pulaski earlier because that's where I've done a lot of my work, and now I'm bringing it back home here to Tazewell. Much like those communities like Pulaski and other rural towns, we have an aging community. Members of our community that live in our town in multiple-story homes that, once they can no longer traverse the stairs, they have to leave. They can no longer live in the town limits that they love. So by adding accessible ground floor, ADA accessible apartments, we will create this opportunity for those that live in our community that can no longer walk the stairs in their home to stay in the town. On the first floor, this is on the street level, so Main Street is right here on the front of the building. We will have two commercial spaces, this one right here on the right, and this one on the left. This one on the right will be the location of the future salon owned by Greta Burton. She is a rock star, by the way. I mean, people travel, she has, she's gifted. I don't know if any of you guys have Instagram, but she's great at a good hair witch. I'm telling you, she's got a heck of a following, and so we're going to have someone that attracts individuals to her products and to her quality from outside the region to get their hair done by her in this space. I promise you that. The other side is going to be a completely renovated, remediated from all asbestos, new commercial space for another business to locate in downtown Tazewell. And on the rear, on the rear side, we will have two two-bedrooms and two one-bedrooms on the rear of the building. On the second floor, currently there are six apartments, but with some reconfiguration, simple reconfigurations, just leaving the walls where they are, opening up some of the original doorways, we will have eight apartments, six one-bedrooms, and two two-bedrooms. When I say apartments, I really mean like stone countertops, finished hardwood floors, central air with mini splits, brand-new electrical, brand-new plumbing, fire and sprinkler. These will be apartments that people are proud to invite their family over, proud to go home to, and proud to live in these units. And I will explain why they will still be affordable with internet, but the community benefits. What are the community benefits of revitalizing this and creating all of these apartments? Well, increase of the downtown population, you know, increase of the number of people that live downtown foot traffic. So there was a study done in Chicago that stated that in order to make their businesses thrive in downtown Chicago, you have to have people living in downtown Chicago. Why is that? Well, the restaurants, all the businesses, they're fine. They can break even because of the lunch rush and for the dinner rush, but it's the people that live downtown that go outside of those peak hours. Those are the people that go to those businesses when they're not at the busiest time of the day, and that really helps those businesses get beyond just breaking even and making that profit. Increase the foot traffic of downtown Tazewell, make it more vibrant. Increase the property value of downtown Tazewell, and this will be a threshold for additional development so that people aren't coming in and buying buildings in the town because they're cheap. They're coming in and buying them in the town because of the value. That's a paradigm that we're seeing throughout rural communities, just like Tazewell, just like Pulaski, where I've done work like this. So how we make, how we do this, you know, we're going to have over $2.5 million in renovations. That's hard cost, soft cost, financing costs, and I'll have a breakdown of that in a minute. To make this feasible, we'll have about $1 million in tax credits and grant funding, and then private investment dollars into the building. So what makes this make sense is the fact that we have a $2.3 million construction budget, but our construction loan is only $1.5 million. That means that the individuals that are living here are helping us cover the mortgage of that difference, that $1 million of tax credits and $1 million in grants really makes it swear these apartments, if we did this project outright and we did not use our capital stacking structure, and we just did the project and hadn't paid the cost of the building, heck, we'd have to charge $2,400 a month just to break even. But because of this capital stacking, this proven concept that I've done in downtown Pulaski multiple times, and now some of my counterparts are doing it in Buchanan, Virginia, and they're doing this in Buchanan and in Danville, it makes it swear these are affordable units of the highest quality. So what does that do for the town? So I said Pulaski, this will be the last time I say it, I promise, but this is what happened in Pulaski when we did our first project back in 2012. We started, it did take a little bit of time to complete it while we were learning the capital stacking process, but the tax, the basis for the town increased more than a whole magnitude. That is a massive jump in tax revenue for the community to do things with, for the town's budget. Same with the county. So for Tazewell, right now, these are the town and county taxes that we pay. At the completion of this project, this will be the tax basis for this building, once it's assessed for, as a $2 million building that's completed. Now that, y'all understand that, right? The increase of property value, and what this does is, this is one building, and as we attract other developers or we do more ourselves, we increase those property values and those tax bases, when we're, and the tax revenue for the town, once those are completed, increasing the foot traffic. So this is us not coming in and just saying, we're developers coming in and doing this project, we hope you guys are excited or whatever, we're coming in and we're partnering with the town, because we understand that without you, we can't do this, and we are bringing this product to you guys to attract other developers. Any questions? I know, I'm sure there's a lot. Anybody can ask, by the way. Jared, you got anything to add?
Not yet.
So when do you plan on starting the inside construction? I know you've been, you've put the new heat pumps or whatever in, so...
We have already, we've already started our pre-development work. We've got a pre-development grant or loan slash grant from Virginia Housing, a zero percent interest level to do a lot of the soft costs. So we've already hired our engineer and architect. They've already completed the building plans, and we submitted part one and part two for the historic tax credit process, and we've actually gotten response from the Department of Historic Resources that tells us what we can or can't do with the building. So now we're making the adjustments to our part two application, and once we're done with that, the architect will take, he can have all the funny ones now and make those mechanical and engineering plans. Once we're done with that, yeah, we're hitting the ground running. So I know I didn't answer your question, but I wanted to answer where we are in the process. So let's say a month, two months?
Once we complete the process of obtaining the funds.
We look forward to assisting in any way that we can, for sure, and just, yeah, reach out to Todd or members of council, and we'll do what we can to help make this a reality.
Perfect. Yeah, and what the town has right now in way of incentives is already, is quite incredible. Todd showed it to us regarding the property tax rebate and some of those tax incentives, which are incredible, but I would like for maybe you guys to think over something regarding utility hookup fees, maybe business license for the businesses that are locating in those facilities, maybe business license waiver for the first one or two years. That actually might be an annual incentive. And reduction of permit fees. There are, hey, I'm asking for more on top of what you guys have already provided, but this is not a one-off for us. We don't want to come in and do this building and just move on. Like I said, this is personal. This is something that if we aren't doing another building after this one, we want to make sure that we're attracting and helping advocate for someone else that sees what we do and wants to duplicate that. So, and to do that, you know, the pot's got to be sweet.
Oh, absolutely.
The business license fees are already, is it $25 for the first year?
It's $20 for the first year, and then I think that there is incentives already in place for business license.
Right. It's very low getting in, and then the next year, it's just basically based off of what you do in that year.
Got it.
So it is a...
$25.
Exactly. So if you have a new business that you want to come in there...
It's a good selling point to get that business.
Seriously, seriously. No, but I think the big ones would be utility hookup fees and the permit fees. Those are the ones that really help just with that initial, I mean, it's why we go to Virginia Housing and ask for a pre-development loan, because really the beginning of the pre-development work, the planning, all the work that goes in at the beginning, and then starting the construction, just alleviating a lot of those costs really helped.
So I don't understand the development process. When you, when you obtained the property, did the utilities just, like the electric? I'm sure water wasn't turned off or might have been turned off, but so that when they do the transfer to you, they've cut the power off and everything, then it's up to you? I'm asking the question.
They just transferred to us.
Okay.
Yeah, so we took over the power bills.
Okay, Todd's just trying to find where the hookup would be.
That would be additional meters.
Okay.
And for the sprinkler system.
So you would add water and electrical to each apartment?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know if we're going to need a meter per apartment. We may need like a meter per floor, definitely separate meters maybe for the commercial That's just going to take some planning on our side, because, I mean, we asked you for 18 meters.
That's worth it.
Right, right, where instead it were five meters. I mean, that's, there's a big cost difference there. And then the sewage hookup fees as well, you know, we're going to have to upgrade, add, and the apartments upgrade our sewage line out of the building, and it's outdated right now. I mean, it has been probably, has, it's probably been having problems for the past 15 years, and we're going to address that and make sure that we upgrade the sewer system as well.
Do we need local business contractors to...
Yes, yes. So we'll be running point on the project, and we're going to be calling local contractors, subcontractors to do all of the work. That's, the goal is to keep this, you know, in-house.
Keep it local in-house.
Yes, sir.
Do you might have any other questions?
Yeah, who's going to be managing the whole property?
We'll have a property management company to take care of that.
What, in Tazewell?
They're in Tazewell now. So we will, they'll rent out the units, they'll make sure that the work orders and everything gets taken care of. But regarding the commercial units where we will be, Greta will be locating in one of the commercial units, so we're working with Tazewell today as well. I mean, a great source, great viable thing in this town, Tazewell, today to work with them to help us with the other commercial space as well.
I was wondering if you have a protected date of completion.
Don't say it, you, optimistically, that's what you said.
I was going to say March 2024, next spring.
Next year sometime.
In the future.
You got to work on supply chain stuff.
Well, I mean, and, you know, right now, we are, the country, the economy, everything is at such a crisis breaking point in regards to the supply chain, housing, and just, just everything in between, and we just see this as an opportunity to actually keep the towns, the town of Tazewell has a lot of momentum. The governor literally talked about the back of the dragon, like, two weeks ago, talked about the back of the dragon, talked about the spearhead trail, talked about what was happening in this town. The governor, it's crazy. We have momentum. This is a way during a dark time in the country in regards to development and the housing crisis, for this town to push through that by utilizing this unique capital stacking. Otherwise, it wouldn't be, be as feasible, it wouldn't be feasible. Yeah, but I, I hope you guys can hear how excited I am.
We couldn't tell.
Yeah, this is, this is, it's going to be a sweet project, and we're just proud to be here. Any other questions?
Thank you very much, Joe. Appreciate it.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda is new business recognition. We have none scheduled for tonight, so next is the approval of minutes for a council meeting on January 10th, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve? Moved against second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the council minutes of January 10th, 2023, say so by saying aye. All opposed, say so by saying nay. All right, so minutes are approved. Next is approval of financial statements and the financial report from January 2023. Can I get a motion to approve? So moved against second. Second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approval of financial statements and financial report January 2023, say so by saying aye. All opposed, say so by saying nay. All right, so financial statement, financial report for last month is approved. Next is the committee conference updates. Council member Davis will give us planning commission committee update.
Okay, so we met last Monday, and we actually had three things that came up. One, we had a presentation for Mr. Allison. Then we also had a special exception permit for an Airbnb at 145 Philo Street. We'd like to forward that up to council to set it for a public hearing. We also talked about the chapter in our town code that deals with family day homes. The chapter, when it was written, it was placed basically just at the end of the chapter, which it actually falls within the section dealing with the BZA, the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that's really not the place to put it. So what we would like to do is we would like to repeal that code and move it up to a different code section. What code section was that for?
Change it to 23-116 to 23-100.1, put it under permits and certificates.
That's right. So, and the language of it is pretty much the same. I think there's some, been some updating and clarification on the language where it read a little monkey before. So that is also forwarded up to the council.
That it?
Yep.
Any questions? Okay, so next is our unfinished business. I know nothing that we have on the agenda. Next is new business. First is a set of public hearings to repeal existing section 23 through dash 116, family day home, or homes of Article 8 of Chapter 23 of the Town Code and the doc, Section 23 dash 100.1 zoning permits, family day homes in Article 7 of Chapter 23 of the Town Code. Jared, Mr. Hurley, could you, this is pretty much what Emily was just speaking about.
We're just repealing the order now and placing it in the certificates of permits section.
Yeah, I noticed that most of the wording...
There's two codes updated from the Virginia case that correspond to the time now.
This code section, family day homes, was adopted by the town back about 21, 22 years ago, and since then, the actual underlying state code foundational section has been repealed and moved, and for whatever reason, to the education section of the state code. And so it really became, I think, probably necessary to go ahead and one, clean up the location aspect of the family day homes code section within the town code, and also adopt or come into compliance with what the state code has changed from Social Services chapter to Education chapter, just so that everything sort of lines up together. So what Chris has recommended and the planning commission agree with and forwarded to you all tonight to consider was the repeal of the older section. It's basically, I want to say a re-adoption, but it really comes down to just very little substantive changes within the definition for family day homes and the criteria that the planning commission looks at and the town council looks to in terms of when and where and under what conditions a family day home certificate or, actually, a, yeah, it is a certificate for operation be considered. Takes into play or tend to account the new state code sections, and then basically puts in a section where for the general public, it's easier to find, makes more sense.
Excellent.
So just need to have a public hearing, and since it is a zoning change or amendment, really here's a change, you're not a man, you're changing, it still has to be advertised just like any other zoning change, so the public hearing, that's what planning commission recommends.
Three minutes, right? So next.
So what, David?
We got three hearings?
Not hearing, just you have one hearing. You have two advertisements, one hearing. And you'll have, after the hearing, you'll have your standard readings.
And these locations in the business district or?
Anywhere. Family day homes under state code can go anywhere. That's why it's a, it's not necessarily a zoning question as much as it is a permit or certificate of operation question. It's under state codes. It's very similar to the concept we've talked, you know, the councils talked about here in the last couple of months about adult daycare, not that I daycare, adult homes, like the ones you have Davis House as an example. Under the state code, those are an exception to exist in zone. You can put them anywhere as long as they meet criteria under apartment social services and certain licensing requirements. Family day homes are similar to that, except it's more like daycare, but you can put it anywhere as long as you meet the criteria that the council sets out because state code allows it. So in some ways, it supersedes what the town zoning code allows for. Since you can put it not only in business as it is somewhat of a business, you can also put it in residential as long as it meets the criteria set forth. So you're saying about three readings, you just have one reading, two advertisements, just like any other public hearing. And then you, what you would do is basically, council, what I recommend you do is you repeal the old one and set an effective date when it goes out of basically enforcement. And the new one you adopt, you don't need to adopt it as an emergency, you just set the two dates the same. The new one takes effect when the old one sunsets.
So we would repeal on the same day as the public hearing?
Well, you basically set the repeal on to say on the same day of your second reading. About thirty days from that, since any ordinance again, it's coming back the way your charter is set up. Any ordinance you enact must take, can take place thirty days, it usually takes place thirty days after the second reading, unless you pass it as an emergency. My recommendation to you, this is not an emergency, as long as you can keep the old one in effect until it expires and the new one can come into effect. So bottom line, you have the repeal to take effect within thirty days, like any other ordinance, and the new one to take effect within thirty days. So then you have the sunset of the one, the enactment, the effective passage of the other happen on the same day.
Typically, when you do a repeal, it's effective immediately.
It can be. See, like you're repealing.
But we don't want it to be.
You're passing an ordinance. Now, yeah, that's not trying to complicate it. I mean, it already sounds like it is. But it's one where you pass an order to, you have to have a second reading in thirty days following that as when that takes effect unless you specify a specific day. That's what I would recommend you do is just set the thirty days off.
Okay, but today always you have to set the initial.
Set the public hearing, so all you're doing is set up for next month, March.
Yes, so it'd be fourteen March. Do we have to give a specific time?
Uh, seven fifteen, should be fine, seven twenty, somewhere. Because it really, it's, you're not really changing a whole lot. I don't think anybody has any questions because you answered fairly quickly since you're not substantially changing a whole lot here.
Right. So I need a motion to set public hearing for fourteen March. Yeah. Yeah. Fourteen March, seven fifteen, to repeal the existing section twenty-three dash one one six, family day homes of article eight of chapter twenty-three of the town code and adopt section twenty-three dash one hundred dot one zoning permits, family day homes in article seven of chapter twenty-three of the town code.
Seven minutes.
You get a second?
Seven.
All in favor, say in the public hearing, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. Alright, so the public hearing will be set. Next on the agenda is the approve the demolition process of structure two one five one Bing Castle. Mr. Hurley, do you want to give a little background?
I have, everybody knows, it's Long John Silvers. I've got some pictures inserted here. Starts on page one oh nine through one eleven, I believe. Shit, one twelve. Got a sixty day to send the notice now for sixty days to the owner to give him a chance to either do something with it or he can carry it off to sale. If I don't get any response, I'll start the demolition process as soon as I get a contract around that.
Can't be too safe with the electric and the light still on and all that water on the floor.
Fire chief went out there and looked at it. He said some fire prepared to happen.
Chris, who is the actual, how is that property titled?
L O J O U Proffits.
Is that a, I'm assuming it's a corporation? Who's the registered agent?
It used to belong to Charter Foods, but now it's owned by somebody in New Jersey.
Who's it, so as far as the state corporation commission is concerned, who are they showing as their registered agent for service? The notice that you're going to send out is going to have to go to that registered agent is what I'm asking.
Long John property, as hell, I see.
I understand, but there shouldn't be a designated person. So we can talk about that.
Yeah.
Used to be Ray West.
Ray West?
Used to be. I don't know if he still does. I can find.
I think he was Charter Foods.
Well, I mean, he had several long downs when they had, throughout the country, in this area, named Ray West.
It'll be on the state website. Just need to make sure whoever you give the notice to, that's where it's going to have to go.
Right.
Yeah, I can find that.
Okay, so what we're looking for is a motion to approve, so why Chris does submit the required paperwork to start the process?
Is there going to be a second approval before the tear number is upgraded?
Yeah, would that be, so, no. They have up to ninety days, is that sixty days?
The code says thirty days, but we always do sixty on deal.
So is there going to be any other type of attempt of contact or is it going to be one?
Nah, I'll do like ten contact. Plus, this probably will be told July, hopefully July.
Any more questions?
I could just see a worst case scenario, you have letters sent, somebody's building is torn down, even though it's in the state. You want to make sure your diligence is given when contacted.
Okay, so I need a motion to allow Chris to start the process on the demolition of structure two one five one Bing Castle.
I'll make a motion.
Seven.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. Alright, so Chris, go ahead and get the paperwork created. Next, approve the twin community status resolution. So I was contacted about a month ago by the clerk of Catholic County, Illinois, asking if we would be interested in becoming a twin community with them. So they would share information with their population about our area and we would do the same for their area. It's kind of like the twin, twin cities program that you've read about before. And Mr. Ackerman actually came to Tasswell over Christmas and was taking pictures in front of town hall, the courthouse and all over. So he's really interested in it and it is kind of a neat idea. He, we want to pass a resolution where we'd be, we'd identify each other as twin communities and, you know, share information back and forth and maybe if we're ever up in Illinois, we can swing by and, you know, talk, talk with this guy.
They already get calls from many people already.
Oh, yeah. And if you go on Google and you search Catholic County. You always get Illinois before you get Virginia. So. So I will read the resolution and then ask for a motion to approve. So this is a resolution of the county of Tasswell, Illinois and the town of Tasswell, Virginia, establishing the twin community status between our communities. Whereas within the United States, only four counties' communities are named Tasswell. And whereas each of these counties' communities are named in honor of Virginia politician Henry Tasswell or his son, Virginia politician Littleton Tasswell. And whereas this shared history between our counties' communities created a unique historical bond between us. Whereas the basis of twin community stack status was inaugurated by President Dwight D. Eisenhower in nineteen fifty-six to establish greater friendship and understanding through the medium of direct personal contact and correspondence. And whereas many communities throughout the United States have successfully adopted and implemented programs for the exchange of ideas and visitations of people. And whereas the counties and communities of Tasswell County, Illinois and town of Tasswell, Virginia, through their established governmental bodies and their civic organizations as a group and through their individual citizens, recognizing and endorsing this program as a means of establishing a lasting friendship between the citizens of our communities. Now therefore being resolved by the county of Tasswell, Illinois and town of Tasswell, Virginia, that A, on behalf of the citizens of our communities, we hereby endorse this declaration of twin community status and support the continued outreach efforts between our governmental bodies, civic organizations and citizens. B, following acceptance, acceptance by each community listed above, the county clerk of Tasswell County, Illinois will send copies of this finalized resolution to each participating member for signature. And C, copies of finalized signed resolutions will be sent by the county clerk of Tasswell County, Illinois to each community for their records and/or public display. But I just need a motion to approve.
Should we see if the little husky real toos?
Monorail. So I've got one motion. Can I get a second? John?
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay, you, you can take it.
Okay, thank you very much.
So no discussion. All in favor of passing resolution, stay so by saying aye. All opposed, stay so by saying nay. Okay, so the resolution will be approved. I'll contact Mr. Ackerman and let him know that we passed it through council. So next, we're going to receive an EMS update by Sydney Saline.
Just wanted to give y'all a quick update on our EMS department. It's been a while since we've given you all an update. And our budget's looking good right now. Our revenues as of January thirty-first is one million, twenty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. We've projected one point three million for this this year. So we're about to be on where we should be for now with revenues since we've got five more months to go. Expenses of January thirty-first is nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven thirty-seven. Our expenses are a little bit high, but that's more than we projected this time. It's due mostly to our truck repairs and cost of supplies, inflammation, but I'm still confident we'll end the year in the black. We've had a lot of mechanical issues with all of our trucks lately. We've got a total of six trucks. And at one point on Sunday, we had no operating trucks other than nine oh one, our new transit man, which we can't really run, probably one calls. Nine oh six broke down last week. Transmission went out by the crews in Roanoke. But luckily, they got the patient to the hospital and cleared up before it broke down. Nine oh eight has fuel system problems. Ramis told us today it would cost eleven thousand dollars to fix it, but need a whole fuel system replaced. I spoke with Donnie and Todd this morning and we're going to take that to CNN, what I actually did this morning, and let them look at it. They've worked on a lot of our trucks and they give us fair prices on that. So let them check it out before we look at repairing that. Nine oh seven has wiring issues. It's out of service and that Ramis is getting diagnosed on what's going on with it. Nine oh five had a fuel trick to go bad, but TJ repaired it Monday morning. It's back in service, as of yesterday. And when a truck goes down, our main issue is getting the parts in to fix them. We ordered a transmission for nine oh six and it's going to be sometime in March for you and get the transmission in to start working on the truck. You know, normally you could order parts and get them within a day or two. Now you're lucky weeks or months, you know, to do them. But that's across the board with, you know, everybody. Back in July, Brandon was awarded two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for a new ambulance through the rescue squad assistance fund. I ordered the truck immediately in July when we were awarded the money. The rep first told us it'd be December when we got the truck, then it was pushed to April, now it's July. So hopefully before Christmas we'll have the truck. It's sitting on a speedway in Kentucky waiting on parts, so.
So they're having the same problem you are.
There's a second rescue squad assistance fund there. Spring cycle closes March fifteenth. And I'm working on the grant now, the grant for a van ambulance, a gas four-wheel drive, because they're so much cheaper to work on and tires, maintenance, fuel.
So as we receive these new trucks, I know you're limited on space. Do we put some amount of service and auction them off or how?
Well, if I do the grant for the one in July, we replaced it nine oh eight, so we'll be taking it out of service in a minute.
Is that just maybe limited on space?
But how many, how many of those ambulances broke down on the run or?
Right now, we have three run in our new van unit, which only does transfers, as long as it transfers. And then nine oh five and nine oh nine are in service.
The way I see it, you know, if an ambulance is breaking down, electrical transmissions, we need something to keep the ambulance running and getting the patients where they need to go. So I'm, get rid of the oldest one or the two oldest ones.
I think that's what she's doing is she applies her grants. She's replacing them with.
It's just the weight on getting, you know, shit to it.
But we need some new ambulance so we get the patients where they need to go.
Exactly.
And that way, I mean, I hate to take ambulances out and also the transmission goes out, you're floating.
Right.
Take the patient to the hospital. That's what I worry about when you take them out and stuff.
Absolutely. So we're working on it. I'm working on that second grant, so hopefully.
Yeah, good. I hope. That would be great.
Any other questions or I'll answer. Thank you.
Now you guys are staying busy, that's for sure. Okay, so there's no miscellaneous new business that I saw. So next is our miscellaneous public comment. We have Ms. Alice Walworth, if you could step up. Give a name and address, please.
Well, again, thank you all for having me back. The reason I'm here is I, oh, my husband's going to hand out.
These are the letters that have been sent to you by email and certified.
And, yeah, and US mail.
I'm done with placing the minutes.
So again, thank you all. And I have something to you all. The January twenty-seventh letter was addressed only to Ms. Davis, but I think you all got copies. And I guess I haven't received any response to my letter. And I'm very concerned as a, you know, a taxpayer, what happened to this, what happened to my concerns? And I'd like to make sure that, you know, this, this was very upsetting for myself, my neighbors, the zoning issue. It was the seven fifty-one Bing Castle zoning issue. And we just want to make sure that this doesn't happen again to another neighborhood. And I think the best way to do that is just to have kind of some transparency. So I would like to have all my letters entered into the meeting minutes. And if you don't mind, I'd like to read from some of the letters that I have not gotten any response to.
I don't think they got a letter from you.
Yeah, Tom sent out, that's his study, have letters for everybody on his schedule.
So I just, you know, as a, as a resident taxpayer, I just like to know what, what, you know, what happened to these concerns. You know, is this something that still works? Is it over? I read the newspaper, it was over, but, you know, that's the newspaper.
They have chosen a different location for all, we understand.
Okay, and it would have been nice to just for us to have gotten a letter, me and my other, you know, neighbors that have been here and I'm very concerned about this. This affected us greatly. So anyway, just going to read a little bit of my letter. Dear Councilmember Davis.
Which one are you reading from?
The January twenty-seventh. Ms. Davis responded to my January twenty-third letter. Ms. Davis and Mr. Pye, I believe. Thank you.
Actually, it was just me.
Just you?
Yes. No.
It's well written. Thank you for your email response.
Awesome. Well, I mean, when I saw that you thought that Mr. Pye had helped me with it, I didn't know whether to be offended or flattered.
It was well written, so it'd be flattering.
I'll take all the credit I can get.
Well, I, you know, I just really had some questions about the planning commission, the procedures, and I just, you know, would like to have a response to those. That's with my neighbors, so.
What I can tell you about it is the first meeting that happened, which addressed the.
What I can tell you about it is the first meeting that happened, which addressed the R2 zoning, which made a proposal that was forwarded up to council to set a public hearing, was to add a children's residential facility into the code for R2 zoning. So everyone that got that letter was in R2 zoning because it was a change to the R2 zoning.
Yeah, I understand.
The next council meeting, Mr. and Ms. Holloway came in and they asked to have their property rezoned to R2 with the understanding that it would be a children's residential facility if that first code passed. So it could not be a residential facility until that first code had the public hearing and was voted on and passed where a residential facility was added to R2. So that was all with the understanding that if it passed, they wanted this to go into place. And that is the letter that you received because you were adjoining property owner.
Yes. But there was no, when you accepted the application, there was no, that was not in the zoning ordinance as yet. That had not been approved. And I thought it was really out of place to accept an application for something that didn't exist. And, you know, this, in the state, the state requires needs assessments be done. There was no needs assessment for this, to, you know, no impact assessment. Why weren't those needs done?
Brett, does the state require needs assessments?
Not that I'm aware of. Again, I'm not exactly certain when you say needs assessment. What do you mean?
Virginia Code 15-284 requires every proposed amendment to zoning ordinance to be accompanied by an analysis of how the amendment will impact local residents.
Where are you, I'm just, I'm not trying to interrupt you. I'm just trying to say, where are you? I've got the code section.
15-2.
And I'm looking at it.
284.
Yes, ma'am. And I'm looking for your requirement. But I read, I got here, this is matters to be considered in drawing and applying zoning ordinances in districts. This was not one, and I'm not trying to be hyper technical with you, but this wasn't a drawing or applying necessarily a zoning ordinance or a district for what was requested. But the code section reads zoning ordinance in the district shall be drawn and applied with reasonable consideration for the existing use and character of the property, the comprehensive plan, the suitability of property for various uses, the trends of growth of change, the current and future requirements of the community. And it reads on, it gives basically a backdrop. It doesn't talk about what shall be done in terms of needs assessment or something.
And that's, those things are basically needs assessment and impact assessment. And I guess before we start changing the zoning of our town, which, you know, we love, we should, you know, find out what are the impacts of that to everyone? You know, what are the impacts going to be of the apartments that are going to be on Main Street? It sounds like it's going to be a great impact. But, you know, everyone is going to be impacted by these things and especially when it's your home. And I've owned my home for 25 years. You know, when I, you know, look out my kitchen window, I see in the other man's windows. This was, you know, had a great impact on me. I didn't even know about this until, you know, five days before the last hearing. So I just really want to encourage you all to be more transparent with residents and to be more responsive to their concerns. Just an email, just a letter would have really, you know, made a difference.
So the original letter, was it mailed to your mailing address?
It was, yes, it was. I have it at Charlottesville and that's my mailing address.
Okay, so I don't think the Town of Tasswell realized that your mailing address was in.
No, I only received one letter and it was in Charlottesville. So it was the right, you know, it was just five days before, but it was the correct address.
There's a requirement as to what timeframe you can send those letters.
Twenty-four days and five days.
Yeah. So we try to get it right in that timeframe because you can't send it too far ahead, you can't send it too late. So I know that Mr. Hurley was within that timeframe when he sent it.
Yes, I received it five days before.
But, I mean, that's a requirement statewide if, um.
Yes.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's something that we have no control of.
Oh, I, no.
The notification.
I received a notice. So that's not, you know, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking more about being more transparent with residents, more responsive to residents. I just didn't feel I, you know, I wrote these letters and I just really didn't get a response other than what I read in the newspaper. And I can't, you know, if I had something in writing, I would feel a lot better if this had gone away. If I knew it had gone away. I don't know if it's going to come back next week, next month, next year.
We don't either. Months like both.
I know that the Holloway's have gotten a letter saying that their application has been rejected. Is that correct, Robby?
Yes. And it would have been nice for the people you sent in the notices too, for the six of us or eight of us, however many that you sent out, to also receive that information. We didn't know. And I'm just, as a, you know, citizen, I just wanted to let you all know that it would make a big difference to be a little more responsive to residents, so. Do you all have any questions for me? Thank you. This has just been a really big, big deal for, you know, us, our neighbors. So we just want to make sure it didn't happen again and we weren't kind of blindsided by it like we were this time. So thank you all very much.
So next, Conrad Inkins or?
My wife's got the issue.
Okay. And next, we have Ebony Wallace. Come up, state your name and address, please.
Hello, Ebony Wallace, 118 Poplin Street, North Tasswell.
Go ahead. It's all the four years.
We have a growing houseless population. And it's hard for a lot of people to find affordable, clean, safe, livable housing. So would the town allot some space or at least make a deal with the hotels? Because right now we have churches and people trying to put the people up and that can be, you know, hard to bear. So we would like support from the town. There are more resources now for people with substance abuse issues. But as far as, you know, a lot of our houseless people are veterans or people timed out of foster care. But we also have people that were displaced from that very building that we discussed earlier that still have to go out. So what can we do to ease that pressure and to give them the homes and love that they deserve?
You and I should work together and see what we can come up with as a plan and then bring it.
I asked you that two years ago, sir.
I know.
And I call you frequently. Every time I get somebody, I'm like, hey, do you have a room? Is there space?
The town owns some properties. Well, the IDA owns properties, but nothing that could be turned into a housing. They're more structures like warehouses and things like that. But we can.
But even temporary, because you said that you would make a deal with the motels to get them.
Right.
So we have them right now.
We could look.
He's so fine.
We could see what they could do, but we can't make them. I mean, we can, you know, offer to help pay some of it, but we can't. We can't force them to do it because it's private.
We can ask.
Yes, we can ask. Do you work with any particular organization already?
I do. North Tasswell Church of Christ and Celebrate Recovery, as well as Mount Movers and ASAP. And each one's each one. And the gym too.
What was the second one? After you said North Tasswell?
Celebrate Recovery and Mount Movers. And Grove Gas. If you want to, you're ready. One, oh, five, six? But it's a growing issue with the, you know, we have young mothers that have no one, people that are aging out, don't have any other family. So as a community, I thought we'd get together to help ease that. And also, you know, help sometimes us, us, uh, natural resources.
It's, I know even looking for rental property around here is hard.
Yes, yes, it is.
I have a friend that I've been working with to try to find her place for quite a while.
I'm trying to find five, two bedrooms and two three bedrooms right now.
Well, I'm also looking for three bedrooms.
And there are also people that have property that, you know, wouldn't mind having one made it or things like that. Thank you a little bit, listen.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, so I guess that is going to conclude our town council meeting. Or if there's a, oh, yes.
Yeah. Actually, I have a question. Chris, we had the special exception permit, the first couple that wanted to do the Airbnb out of their house. It's not on the agenda. Is that something that was removed? Do we need to?
We need to set a public hearing for next, in March.
You're right.
Because I got another five neighbors.
Right.
There's joint owners again.
Yes.
This special exception for me.
This is the property located at 145 Phylis Street? Phylis, Phylis? Phylis, okay.
Phylis.
Um, but they want to, yeah, it's got a nice big driveway. I think it's a three-bedroom. And they want to turn it into an Airbnb.
The blue house?
It's, if you're going up, it's the first one on the left.
Once you turn up the street?
Yeah.
Dark ground on the corner.
Right. So do we, can we?
I think we should, because they do want to get that special exception permit, so the planning commission forwarded up to get, to set a public hearing.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, and we did the last one for 7:15, so we'll do this one for seven. So could I get a motion to set a public hearing to discuss a waiver for 145 Phylis Street to become an Airbnb for March 14th at 7 o'clock?
Yes.
So we, you get a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say not public hearing, based so by saying aye? All opposed, based so by saying nay? Okay, so that one's set. Any additional public comment?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor.
Or Councilman, sorry.
Apology. There is a community needs assessment annually by Clinton County Community Action. I'm sure you can get your hands on that. And it's really, I'm having a dog in it, like, right under the study every spring.
By who?
Clinton County Community Action. Jennifer Horn is usually the one who assembles that data. She'll be thrilled that I gave you her name.
Thank you, Nate. Okay, any other council member comments?
Yeah, I have a, I noticed the water pool was down on the cornline going to, uh, replace the drain. And I like, I've been fighting this for a long, long time, just bringing it up, the water sewer lines needs to be fixed. I mean, maybe in the future, I might as well go before I either die or stay up here, I don't know. But I definitely just like for the streets to be fixed and roads to be clean and clear.
Excuse me, since that came up and since they are working on car grass, I have Andre Wallace, I live at 315 Riverside Drive. I also have a property at 476 Carver. And you're talking about the water lines. The water runs off of the hill on Fudd Street, down the hill, underneath my house, in front of the house. And it's usually gone in a couple of days, but the more rain, the more snow we have. Now, they did do a drainage system further down on Fudds. But the end, where my house is, they didn't, they didn't extend it up that far. I think they stopped it maybe 150 yards from where I need to have a drink. In fact, I went to, when they came to turn the water on today, the whole thing was full of water. And I heard somebody say they pay taxes. I actually pay town aid, county taxes, so. Now, and I just like as much help. And the street is terrible. It ain't as wide as, as these tables. You can't pass. In fact, I have tenant on Fudd Street and they towed her car because the garbage truck couldn't get up the road. So they stopped using the truck and started using a pickup to pick up her garbage. It needs to be widened. There ain't no sidewalk or nothing, but, but it needs to be, look like it's part of the great town of Tass, okay? And I like to not have to deal with water right at the steps. So when you're working on that side, you're up the street on the other side of the road. And I did mention it to the guys that are working there and I showed them what the problem was. But I'm easy, I'm easy to work with and I just want it to be better for all of us. And I wouldn't go say that, but when you start talking about. Well, I have my stuff. But I appreciate your work.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Make that motion? You a second? Any discussion? All in favor of adjournments, based so by saying aye? All opposed, based so by saying nay?